All right.
Now, please stand and join me for your allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. We have two school board meetings before us tonight, and the first one is our reorganizational meeting. I will act as chair to that meeting until a new chairperson is elected. So now I call the reorganizational board meeting to order. And the first item of business then will be to proceed with the oath of office for Kirby Anderson. So Kirby, if you could go over to the podium. Superintendent Ness will facilitate this.
Yes, I will read the school board member oath of office. First of all, congratulations, Kirby, and welcome. It is an honor that you were elected to guide the education of our community's children. As you recite the oath of office, you assume a tremendous responsibility as director of our school district with duties empowered by the Minnesota Legislature. This power puts you and other members of our school board in the position of being both morally and legally responsible for equitable, quality education of every student in the district. In carrying out this responsibility, you will be asked to fulfill the roles of vision, structure, accountability, and advocacy. In providing vision, the board with extensive participation of the community envisions the community's educational future and then formulates the goals, defines the outcomes, and sets the course for the public schools. To achieve the vision, the school board, excuse me, the board establishes a structure and creates an environment designed to ensure all students the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. Because as a board, we must be accountable to the community, we must ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement and all conditions affecting the education of our children. As board members, we serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students, our community schools, to advance the vision for our schools. Furthermore, we must strive to work together with the superintendent and staff to lead the district toward fulfilling the vision. We have created fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizen, and personal development.
Okay. Should I put my hand up?
Sure.
Having signed the acceptance of office and office oath of office, I hereby publicly affirm my commitment to the oath of office. I swear, affirm, that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state, and that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the office of school board member of Independent School District Number 544 to the best of my judgment and ability. There you go.
Perfect.
I'd like to thank Academy.
The next item of business is to establish a quorum, and I will act as clerk to do that. Missy Hermes, president. Matt Lemke.
Here.
Stephen Vegasa.
Here.
Melanie Cole, here. Kirby Anderson.
Here.
Natalie Knutson.
Here.
All right, we do have a quorum. Is there a motion to adopt the reorganizational meeting agenda?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, that is approved. And the first office for election is election of the chairperson, and I will now seek nomination for the office of chair. I will nominate Matt Lemke for office of chair.
Second.
All right, are there, oh, are there any other nominations?
I'm sorry.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations for the office of chair? All right. If there are no further nominations, then the office, or the nominations for office of chair are closed. I hereby declare that Matt Lemke is elected by acclamation, and I direct the acting clerk to record so in the minutes. Matt, so at this point, Matt takes over running the meeting.
I'll go back.
Okay, moving on to our next nomination. I'm open for nominations for vice chairperson.
I nominate Melanie Cole.
Are there any further nominations for vice chairperson? Are there any further nominations for office of vice chairperson? If there are no further nominations, nominations for that office of vice chair are closed. I hereby declare Melanie Cole elected by acclamation and direct the acting clerk to so record in the minutes. Congratulations, Melanie. Opening for nominations for clerk.
I nominate Missy Hermes for clerk.
Are there any further nominations for clerk? Are there any further nominations for the office of clerk? If there are no further nominations, nominations for the office of clerk is closed. I hereby declare Missy Hermes elected by acclamation and direct the acting clerk to so record in the minutes. Congratulations, Missy.
Thank you.
We'll open up for nominations for treasurer.
I nominate Kirby Anderson for treasurer.
Are there any further nominations for treasurer? Are there any further nominations for the office of treasurer? If there are no further nominations, nominations for the office of treasurer is closed. I hereby declare Kirby Anderson elected by acclamation and direct the acting clerk to so record in the minutes. Congratulations, Kirby. Moving on to item number seven. We have, right now, we have to set the basic salary of school board at four-fifties, is currently at four-fifty. There is a proposal to keep that at four-fifty. There is also a proposal to have the chairperson to be increased to five-fifty. That basic salary covers all regular and special school board meetings, work session, retreats, two committee meetings a month, and the MSBA conference. Certified contract negotiation committee will be paid a stipend of five-hundred payable once during each contract cycle. Eighty million outside of the basic salary conditions will be paid at twenty-five dollars per hour.
I make a motion similar to what is proposed, but to set the monthly salary at four-hundred and fifty dollars per month for each of the board members. A motion that includes a stipend for five-hundred dollars for the certified staff negotiating contract, but only one stipend per contract cycle. I wish to propose that beyond two regular school board meetings and two additional meetings that, and excluding the MSBA conference, that we get hourly rate of twenty-five dollars per hour. Basically, the same motion minus the increase paid for the chair. So that is, that is my motion.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Well, we talked back earlier in July, I think, when we had our retreat, we talked about the possibility of elevating the pay for the chair because of the extra responsibilities as board chair. So I didn't know if there's a lot of commitment to that, and I just wanted to ask if anyone else at the table has a strong feeling that that should be included.
I just personally felt, just in the past, some history on the chairperson, that it's one of those, that we're all board members, we have the opportunity to become chair too. And at that point in time, when you become chair, you also assume you're going to take on some additional responsibility as chairperson. I thought that because we all vote together, we all have one vote, I felt there wasn't really a need to see an increase for the chairperson, at least at this point in time.
All right.
Any further discussion on that issue? All those in favor of the motion as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, item number eight, meeting dates, locations, and times. The meeting place will be the Otter Tail, Otter Tail, Otter Community Room, Kennedy Secondary School. The meeting dates will be on the second and the fourth Monday of the month, starting at 5:15 p.m. Exceptions, July and November meetings on the third Monday of the month only, and December meeting on the second Monday of the month only. Summer meetings will begin at 7:15 a.m. Just note that the school board meeting is scheduled for October fourteenth, right now at two thousand and nineteen, which is Columbus Day. Do I have a motion to set the meeting dates, location, times as noted?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All of, please.
Oh, I was just gonna say, any feedback on the morning meetings? Really, they're, in the last season of summer meetings, it seemed like there was crunch time where people were scrambling to get to work. I do like the morning meetings in the summer to open up your evenings to enjoy, so just wanted to throw that out there.
Did we run into that a lot? I can't, because I have to work at eight myself, being selfish here, but, I mean, even if we pushed it back to seven, I would be, it just gives us a little more breathing room for those of us that have to get to work. Guessing I'm not in the same boat as everybody, I guess I am in the same boat as maybe some of us here, but.
I'm flexible. I like morning.
Is it an option to, so then, then the debate might be seven or 7:15. Is it an option to take some vacation or compensation time or to stay for, because we could basically assume morning, morning meetings should have an hour to hour and a half allotted for it.
I'm willing to amend my motion and have us meet at seven o'clock instead of that.
Okay, and the summer meetings? Okay. Do we, now?
I think the intent that we, you know, as board chair, Melanie, I talked about this last week, you should be looking at probably a seven to eight-thirty timeframe between the school board meeting and a work session, you know, with the idea is you get out as soon as you can, reasonable, but there should be a little time that you'd be looking at preparing for, but trying to get done as soon as possible so you don't have to take too much comp time or anything there.
Right.
Right. Seeking that balance between enjoying the summers a little bit more, but not ignoring the business of the school district, that's all. So.
We have an amendment to the motion for seven a.m. So we need a second. Missy, Missy is, well, we took.
Did you make the original motion?
I made the initial.
Yeah, she made the motion.
Who will be the second?
Natalie made the second.
So you need to.
And then Missy amended her motion to seven a.m.
To seven a.m., only for that part.
You need a second.
So I need a second.
To the amendment.
I'll second that if you all are okay with that.
Okay, so we have amended a motion to change just that part to seven a.m. on some, for the summer meetings. Any further discussion?
We might be closer to Bob's rules than Robert's, but it's, I think the intent is there. We're changing the meeting.
We could do, we could go, we could approve the amended and go back to the motion if we want to do it, Roberts.
There you go. You're fine.
Okay. So, all those in favor of the amended motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, amended motion passes. Now we can move on. If we can do Robert's rules, we can do, now we are going back to the motion that was given by Missy, seconded by Natalie. The only changes, that we're going to meet at seven o'clock. Do we have any further discussion on that motion with the amendment? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Okay, item number nine, mileage rate. The mileage rate has been the IRS recognized rate. The new IRS rate is currently set at fifty-eight cents per mile effective January first, two thousand and nineteen. Do we have a motion to set the mileage rate at the IRS recognized rate?
So moved.
Kirby, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Steve, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Item number ten is the official newspaper. The Daily Journal has been the official newspaper. Do we have a motion to designate the Daily Journal as the ISD 544 official newspaper?
So moved.
Melanie, do we have a second?
Second.
Missy, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number eleven is use of the signature scan. Be hereby resolved that the present signature scan can be used until a new signature scan is available. This is a resolution, right? Does this seem to adopt the resolution regarding?
Yep.
Okay, so will somebody offer that resolution and move for its adoption?
I'll give a resolution.
Okay, Steve, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on that resolution? Roll call, please, clerk.
Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Steve Vegasa?
Yes.
Matt Lemke?
Yes.
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
Natalie Knutson?
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes.
Resolution passes. Thank you. Item number twelve, we have a resolution authorizing wire transfer. The authorization for wire transfer for the following business office employees, Mark Madison for sales and payroll taxes, Sherry Smith for payroll taxes, and H.C.S.P., accounts payable secretary for rent and super tenet's contract, and accounts receivable secretary for retiring payments of insurance. Will somebody offer that motion for wire transfer as noted above? It's a resolution.
Excuse me? Could I interject here?
Yes.
I think for me, it's supposed to be sales tax and bond payments.
And bond payments?
Because I don't do payroll taxes.
Oh, yeah.
So, will somebody offer that resolution and move for its adoption to authorize the wire transfers as noted above? Change of bond payments to Mark Maston.
I'll make the motion.
Melanie, do we have a second?
Second.
Kirby? Okay, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Stephen Vegasa?
Yes.
Matt Lemke?
Yes.
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
Natalie Knutson?
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Thank you. Item number three, designate depository security state bank as our official depository. Designate Security State Bank as the official depository. Do we have a motion on that?
I move that we designate Security State Bank as our official depository.
I'm going to need to recuse myself. Steve's going to refuse.
Second?
Go ahead.
We'll take care of it, Kirby, for a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number fourteen is a resolution authorizing to employ legal counsel. Whereas from time to time, matters arise which require consultation with legal counsel, whereas the school board may not have time to statistically hire legal counsel for a particular circumstance that has arisen, and therefore, a general authorization to contact legal counsel is necessary. Whereas the school board reserves a right to hire any legal counsel of its choice for any particular matter. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the school board of Independent School District 544 as follows. The superintendent or school board chairperson be and hereby are authorized to contact legal counsel as needs required. Will somebody offer that resolution and move for its adoption?
I'll offer the resolution and move for its adoption.
Thank you, Steve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Melanie, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Matt Lemke?
Yes.
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
Natalie Knutson?
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Stephen Vegasa?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Thank you. Item number fifteen, acknowledgement of the participation of the district in Minnesota's School District Liquid Asset Fund. Do we have a motion to acknowledge participation in the Minnesota School District Liquid Asset Fund?
So moved.
Missy?
I'll second.
Second by Melanie.
Discussion, Mark, do you want to just say why we are involved?
The liquid asset fund is just basically a fund where school districts pool their money for investment purposes, and that way they can maximize their interest income.
And this is kind of an annual one, so.
Yes.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number sixteen is proposed committee representatives. I just looked that over to see, I don't believe in motion in this part, it's just for, like, it says motion, but.
I did place that down, just, but it does, however you want to handle it.
Okay.
However you want, I was putting it down since.
I think it's appropriate to approve.
Yeah, I kind of decided that.
Sure.
But if you decide different, that's just fine.
Does anybody have any clarification or changes they would like as presented, the committees? Okay, can we have a motion to approve those committees as presented?
So moved.
Steve, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Melanie, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Item number seventeen is proposed negotiation representatives. Give them a look over as presented there, just to look it over. Do we have a motion to approve the proposed negotiation representatives as presented?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. And item number eighteen is just our two thousand and nineteen monthly school board meeting schedule. Please do note that the June, July, and August is now seven o'clock, except seven fifteen.
And I'll get a new list out to everyone.
And May, the last, yes, the last meeting in May.
Along with signing them to review board this.
Yes.
I'll place it on there, now that we have our, our offices in place.
Okay. So check your emails. All right, with that, do we have a motion to adjourn our reorganizational meeting?
So moved.
So moved. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of adjourned, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.
I'm going along.
So I'm going to call our, our meeting of our regular school board meeting of Independent School District 544 to order. Clerk, will you establish a quorum for us, please?
Yes, Kirby Anderson.
Yes, here.
Natalie Knutson?
Here.
Stephen Vegasa?
Here.
Melanie Cole?
Here.
Missy Hermes, present. We have a quorum.
Matt Lemke.
But I am.
Matt Lemke.
I am here.
Sorry.
I haven't been trained for that.
That's what I'm doing.
Trying to get comfort on a noodle.
We do have a board.
So, we're moving on to, we need to approve the agenda as sent up. There are no changes, correct?
No, not, I don't know, yeah, it's, it's an allied data, our agenda besides, so.
Sure.
Depending on when you look at it, if there was good peaks here or there, but.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, agenda passes. Item number D, acknowledgements. Thank you to the following for their donation to the candidate's secondary school music department. Helen Erkerbrack, trumpet. Leila Salseder, flute. Al and Darcy Hickeritz, flute. Terry Brook, trombone. Carol Kern, clarinet. Richard Preppenow, trombone. Tom Wolfe, old trombone. Jill Williamson, two trombones. Barry and Kate Dolan, flute. Margaret Larson, trombone. Mamley Oso, trombone. Dwayne and Cindy Barsh, clarinet. And Dean and Julian Cutsmur for the donation of supplies to Shelley Showneck's classroom at the Kenley School. So thank you for all those donations. Moving on to reports, we'll start with myself, with Lick's Country Service Co-op Board. We did meet this past Thursday. It was just a regular, I should say it was a regular school, regular meeting because it was a reorganizational meeting, so we did have that going on. But other than that, it was just a very standard meeting, nothing to really highlight. That meeting was just a regular meeting, to be honest, with some policies and stuff like that. With Minnesota High School League, they do not meet now until February, so I will have nothing to report on them for this month. So Natalie Knutson, wellness and policy.
Policy has not met since the last meeting that I was present. And the wellness committee meeting just met last week. They are hosting a winter walk to school day on February sixth, which it sounds like last year they had some pretty good participation, so regardless of the weather, it sounds like the teachers will try to get the kids out. Food services continuing to work on improving the healthy options and the fresh options is kind of the biggie. They just finished completing and updating all the food allergy forms. They're installing a large TV in the cafeteria that's going to be mounted and used for advertising of just things that are going on in within the school, things that are related to the food that they're eating, fun facts, different projects and that sort of thing that's happening within the school, so it's going to be kind of an active portal for the kids to be walking by, and that was granted through the LRH Foundation. And they're also going to be using some of that money from the foundation to improve the cafeteria boards at the elementary schools, too. They, yeah, just continue to implement some new sides and some new items, so they just kind of told parents to keep their eyes out for some new things that are continuing to evolve down there. And then, in December, just before the holiday, Kristen Tools, ALC students, and Kate Heichetz, wellness class, launched the Thrive Initiative, the Three Good Things app that went out to the community. After just four days of the two-week period, they had a hundred and eighty-four community members enrolled submitting their three good things every evening. And they will be reporting back at some point on all of the data and all the answers and submissions that they received, but have not heard anything yet. The next wellness meeting is Tuesday, March twelfth. We're always looking for active participation within the community, so I mean, anybody's welcome. March twelfth at three forty-five here in the Otter Community Room.
Any questions for Natalie? Thank you, Natalie. Melanie Cole, Special Ed Co-op, Region One, Finance and Activities.
The Special Education Cooperative met today with the full board, and one of the highlights of each meeting is the director's report by Shannon Erickson, who today reviewed the child count and noted that we have ninety-five additional special education students in our cooperative districts, so that sprinkled amongst all of the districts that increased number. And then she had the autism specialist come in, who described that, you know, her busy work with identifying students with autism and the process that she uses for that. That was, those were the primary facets of that meeting today. And then, Region One, the technology specialist group out of Moorhead, really, the balance of the, the focus there has shifted with the addition of all the synergy schools and the implementation, the staffings, additional staffings to meet all the added schools since the, kind of, the reorganization last year where another provider went out of business. So that's kind of the highlights there. Lot of talking about staffing and how that's working. And then they ended the reimbursement accounts for the, that's done now, the employee reimbursement for their expenditures. So, we didn't meet yet for finance and activities, those couple of subgroups for the school I haven't met yet. So, that's, that's about it.
Any questions for Melanie? Thank you, Melanie. Melissa Herme, Staff Development and Curriculum Review.
Well, the staff development committee met, um, online, they did a Google Meet, um, because we were supposed to meet on January seventh, when, when it was a snow day or a bad weather day. And, um, there is about three thousand eight hundred dollars in the balance remaining for that committee to use for, um, um, teacher, um, staff development. But also, they talked quite a bit about the upcoming, um, staff development day, which is on January eighteenth, and there are a lot, the, they've planned, uh, a, looks like a fantastic day of, um, of different workshops and speakers and so on, um, for teachers to attend. Then, are you questions on that?
How did it go, being online and that did work well?
You know, it went really well, not, because, um, not everyone was aware that we were gonna do that, then there were a few people that said later, oh, I didn't see that coming up, but I thought it worked out okay. Yeah, it went well, so if they decided to do that again in the future, they, I thought it went fine. Um, the curriculum review advisory committee, oh, question.
Any other question?
Okay, the curriculum review advisory committee did not meet in, uh, we meet next Monday.
Any other questions for Melissa? Thank you. Steve Higgins, Legislative Liaison, and Meet and Confer.
So, as far as the legislature is concerned, it's more of a reorganizing right now with the new, I think there was like thirty-three new Senate, new, uh, House and Senate together, I believe that's what it is. So there's, there's, they're basically reorganizing the committees, the education committees, I think they met today, the education committee, and I was working, so I didn't get to watch the, the meeting, but, um, I'll have more, um, information on that next, next, uh, time I give a report. So there's not a whole lot going on in my, uh, I mean, there's, the, the biggest thing that they're looking at is, uh, in terms of education, is the funding formula for, uh, what schools get for each student to make it a little more simple, um, which there'll be, I'm sure, many bills produced, and we don't know which one's gonna pass, so I, I don't like to just say what's being introduced, because I don't want to give an idea that that's what's gonna happen. I like to report on things that are actually happening, so, um, as far as the meet and confer, this is my first report on this, so Jerry might have to fill in some of the dots, or connect some of the dots here, but, uh, so we did meet, Natalie and I were at that meeting, and, um, on the agenda, they talked a little bit about the PLC, which is, uh, uh, professional learning, uh, professional learning communities.
Yep.
And it's a bit, uh, you know, I am a new board member, so I don't know everything yet, but it's a bit like continuing ed for, for teachers, and it's, it's a big deal to be attending these things, and, uh, what they talked about was the, what to do if you miss one of those. And, you know, there's teachers that feel like it's, basically, right now, what's in place is, 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 in a nutshell, just to make a essay, basically, a reflection paper on some of the material that was covered, to, to show that you actually reviewed it, basically, I think that's why that's in place. Makes sense to me, um, and, and there's opinions on both sides, and I guess that, at the end of that issue, Jerry, we, it was more of a, you know, we had been doing this for ten years, this, this, and now it's time to relook at, should we alter this or not, and that was going somewhere.
Yep, so we will continue to, if, if a staffer misses a PLC, there'll be a reflection paper that they write, basically, about the PLC, so we know they're up to speed on what happened at the, at that, but we have a, it's the end of our second cycle of evaluation, so we will be meeting, uh, with the EA and the Teacher Evaluation Group, and this will be a, 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 a point of discussion as well. I don't, I anticipate that we'll have some sort of makeup, whether they can, uh, do a Google Meet, and I think that's a great way to be, so if you're at home with a sick child, for example, and they happen to be down for a nap, you can get on Google Meet and be part of the PLC. So we'll, we'll make arrangements so they can participate somehow.
Absolutely. Um, they also talked a bit about the calendar, um, the only thing that I really took away from that was like, what are we, what are we doing with school? Snow days, you know, and some teachers, there are some people in committee who are, well, you know, the, the meeting, the, having a snow day at the very end of the year is, it's garbage time, quote unquote, and I guess that's my word for it, but, you know, kids are detached and, uh, they're wanting to get out of school, is there a better option? And actually, that's in our work session, so that's, uh, something I think we'll be talking about, um, if anything needs to be changed, or, I don't know, it's just more of an opening up that discussion, my understanding. Let's see, uh, the new business that they talked about was, uh, the struggles with having, not having enough subs to, to Paris. It is a problem, I mean, we're, we're short people, especially with the, you know, with people having sick kids and the flu season, um, we just, we need a lot more, uh, Paris subs, and how do we attract more, um, is, is kind of the question, that was just introduced. The other thing they talked about was, uh, all of the reminders that go off when there's a snow day, and personally, I had, I get the school stuff and I get the parent stuff, I had like seven, uh, alerts, but honestly, I, I mean, some people hate them, I, I'm just glad I'm getting reminded, because I remember back in the day, when we had to sit and listen to the radio and go through all of the things, and it's just evolved so much, so, um, uh, that's just something that, that, uh, you know, we, there are ways to reduce the amount of alerts you get, you can log into Synergy or the Parent View, whatever it's called, and, and, and turn off a lot of these alerts if you're a parent or, or, or the district here, so, um, I think it's just, uh, you know, hopefully out of that will be more clear instructions of how to reduce those alerts and...
It is an example that, uh, when you sign up for School Messenger, you might have said, oh, I want the texts, I want the email, I want the phone calls, my home phone, I did it myself, though, now I, we've come back out, so now I'm not having my home phone, and, so you, you can manage those, and, and you can also just take your phone and put on do not disturb until after six o'clock, and we'll just, we'll help people manage their alerts, but, but we think it's, uh, it's better to have more notices than not, uh, than not getting notified. And it, the other day, we had two alerts because we called up, we were two hours late first, the weather did not clear, then we, then we decided to call off school, so then you ended up with two, and you might have gotten six, but, um, it woke you up.
So if there's anything I missed, Jerry?
No, I think you're good.
For anybody that lives out of town, it was a red call to me, there were cars in the ditch all over our, our way, and, uh, it was, it was very upsetting.
The gravel roads especially were very, very nice.
Yeah, it was a red car.
Yeah, still are, that's true, yeah, it wasn't nice today either.
Steve, I have a question back on legislative, is Governor Walz going to keep the same person at the Department of Education, or is he choosing someone new?
He did.
He already did?
Yeah, he did. Marie...
Rick Riker.
Rick, 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 Rick.
Riker. Looked that up.
Riker, yes, so Brenda Consilius is completed, her charge.
Any other questions for Steve?
Just back to the snow day, I got a, a couple of Messenger things after that meeting, so we can discuss that a little bit more, just some potential ideas on what we could do differently to eliminate the garbage days, if you were happy about it, so...
Okay, we'll move on. Kirby Anderson, five forty-four Education Foundation.
Yes, we did meet, um, last Thursday, January tenth, and, uh, that was my first time that I've had a chance to sit in with that group, and it was, uh, it was very interesting, I know most of the people on there, and I have served with the, uh, Ferguson Falls Community College, College Foundation Board before, so, so it's, uh, it's a good fit. Mindy Feuter is the director, she, uh, talked about, they had sent out an, an email to all the alumni, um, in mid-December, and they had some statistics, thirty-two percent of the alumni that got those, um, emails opened them, and, but only seven percent clicked onto the link, so, the thirty-two percent is a little higher than average for mass emails, the seven percent is a little lower than average for actually going into the, to the link. They have scholarship applications available in the counseling offices and on the websites, encouraging students to, uh, to go ahead and fill those out. They had some, some good, good news, lots of, uh, donations coming in, um, one of the concerns is there's some of the major pledges are coming due, they had some, I think, five-year pledges of like five hundred and forty-five dollars per year, and they started that five years ago, so some of those are coming due, and they're trying to get, uh, those donors to re-enlist maybe for another five years, um, so that's, that's ongoing. There is going to be the annual golf tournament in July, uh, as a fundraiser, and also, uh, they have a new logo, and they're coming out this spring with a, with a launch, with a new marketing program, and, uh, the board members are actually personally signing off on letters and, and trying to make it more personal, and in fact, even going to, uh, to the radio station and, and some of the, the morning shows, like Mary Dolan has, and, and meeting once a month or so, and having board members go and sit and explain what the foundation does, and, and encouraging, um, students to, to, uh, to fill out applications, and also what other things the Education Foundation does for the school district. And lastly, uh, they asked if any of us can do our part to share foundation information on social media, um, whether it's Facebook, or, I'm not on Twitter or Instagram or some of those newer things, but, uh, if we can share what we have on Facebook, um, and, and with, with our circle of friends, uh, whatever, whatever it takes, because it's a multifaceted marketing program, and that would just be a small part of it, but also important, so that was all. Any questions?
Any questions for Kirby? Thank you, Kirby. Uh, Superintendent Ness?
Yes, just a few items here mainly related to our, uh, calendar that's coming up right now, so this Thursday, uh, January seventeenth, is the end of the first semester, half, uh, half of the year is complete, which is, wow, I can't imagine. And, uh, so on Friday, there's no school for students, Friday, the eighteenth, will be an in-service, staff in-service that, uh, Missy was talking about. The keynote speaker is Dr. Jill Nelson, uh, she's from NDSU, she's talking on daring greatly, it's a lot about, uh, burnout, mental health, it fits nicely in with the Thrive Program, Bounce Back Project, uh, so doing that, and then, like you said, we had a number of breakout sessions, and then in the afternoon, uh, a staff, staff will be working all afternoon in their professional learning communities. Monday, then, is also no school, and that's Martin Luther King Junior Holiday, so no school for students, and staff, that's a work day, uh, so there is a tremendous amount of work, finishing up grading from one quarter, one semester, and getting ready for all new courses, especially at the high school level, uh, for the next year, so that, and then, so then the Tuesday, uh, the twenty-second is the first day of the second semester. Uh, for our school board members, we have, it's a big week for us, uh, this is our biggest learning opportunity for, for the year, it's the MSBA, Minnesota School Board Association Leadership Conference, um, they're bringing back keynote speaker that was here in two thousand thirteen, that, the author of the Trust Edge, I think it's, uh, David Horschloger, I believe is how you pronounce his name, uh, he was very, very well-received and coming back, so, uh, building trust, and certainly that's a, a case where as a board, administration, teachers, you, you all want trust of whoever, teachers want trust of their students, uh, you know, administrators of the teachers and, and community for the school board, so it's all about developing that trust, and that is on Thursday and Friday. And then January seventh, like you said, we had no school, the calendar states right now that, uh, Monday, uh, Monday, May twenty-eighth is, is when students would make that up, uh, I guess we'll be talking about that at the work session, what I would recommend is we probably should wait a couple months, we, then make one calendar change where, all right, we'll be going to school, uh, Monday, Tuesday, depending on how many days we have, so there's no, there's no rush to ch, change the calendar right now, that's why you don't see it on the agenda. That's all I have.
Any questions for Superintendent Ness? Thank you. Moving on to our general consent items, we have amendments for the December tenth, two thousand eighteen school board meeting, bills and treasuries report, Natalie?
Um, yep, so this, um, this month is kind of our low point, the, just finalizing everything for the end of the year, our big bond payment went out, so we're sitting at about six point five million at our low point, so, it's good stuff.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Uh, personnel, Elaine Champion.
Sure, support staff hires, we have Sabrina Noon, she is going to be ECFE, uh, classroom assistant over at our heritage building, um, support staff retirement, Lori Hicks, she'll be retiring at the end of the school year, and a little later on, on her new business, you'll see a resolution on the retirement. Certified teacher hires and contract changes, we have a, a few miscellaneous items under here, Sarah Christensen, she is going to be a long-term substitute teacher at Adams for the rest of the school year, we have an overload contract, um, basically one class for second semester for Lori Roder for college writing, um, and professional technical writing, an overload contract for Jennifer Roos for FACS, and, um, a contract increase of, again, one class for the second semester for Ethan Johnson, which equates to point zero eight three three FTE, and that's for public speaking. Ann Scho IQ Academy teacher, she's rescinding rights to a point one six six seven FTE beginning second semester of eighteen eighteen school year, she just wants to redo some of her, um, class sizes, she, um, teaches for our IQ Academy and also has another job, um, that she teaches in another district, so she's requesting to rescind those rights to, um, some classes. And then the coach hire, we have Joyce Monk for head girls' swim coach, effective basically immediately. So that's what I have.
I just want to clarify, Jen Roos at FACS, she's a language arts teacher, she, she'll get a variance, and she's teaching at the ALC, which is allowed, so, uh, you have some variances there, Ethan Johnson is also at the, uh, at the ALC.
Okay. Item number four is we have a two thousand eighteen through the two thousand twenty collective bargaining agreement between ISD five forty-four and Education Minnesota Ferguson Falls Special Education Paraprofessional Association. With that, do I have a motion to approve the general consent items?
So moved.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Yes.
I'll second.
Natalie, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Oppose?
Nay.
General consent items pass. There is no old business, moving on to new business, we have the revision to the current school board policies, six oh one school district curriculum and instruction goals, and six thirteen graduation requirements, do you want to speak on that before we...
In both of these cases, these are bringing to play into the new ESSA, and it's, uh, recommend, uh, these were recommended, uh, by MSBA, so, so...
Do we have a motion to approve these revisions?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Oppose, motion passes. Item number two, we have an agreement with Wadina Adult Basic Education, ABE, program to transfer programming of the, of the Battle Lake, Underwood, and Henning to Ferguson Falls ABE program effective July first, two thousand nineteen.
Maybe Mark can talk a little bit about that, too.
Do you want to just...
It's just a standard issue agreement that we've had with them, or, excuse me, like we've had with Ashby, only Wadina is now dropping their ABE program, and they now want to be incorporated into our program, uh, I don't know what year it was, but in the past, they used to be part of us, and they split off and now they're coming back.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved. I'll second.
Okay. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes. Item number three would be resolved by the School Board of Independent School District five forty-four, state of Minnesota, as follows. Mark Maston, Business Manager of Independent School District five forty-four, is hereby authorized to sell, assign, and transfer securities on behalf of the Independent School District five forty-four Ferguson Falls School District. Does somebody offer that resolution, move for its adoption?
I'll offer the resolution, move for its adoption.
Excuse me, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Natalie. Uh, discussion, Mark, do you want to...
Yeah, what is, what is happening in here is, back in nineteen eighty-one, there was some stock donated to the school district for an ongoing scholarship. That stock came to the school district, listed as something like superintendent of ISD five forty-four, Peter Madison, irrevocable trust, blah, 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 long line. Many years later, the IRS has now declared that, for whatever purpose, that the name on the stock has to match the holder of the stock, so it has to be changed, the Independent School District number five forty-four. And in order for that to happen, you can't just go to the, the stockholder, uh, issuer and say, change the name, you've got to sell the old stock and buy the new stock. And so that's what this resolution is allowing me to do, is to sell this four hundred shares of Otter Tail stock and put it in the correct name.
Do you have to sell it, though, can you just transfer it, because wouldn't that create a taxable, well, I suppose it's the district.
District doesn't matter, we're not, we don't get taxed on it, but that's the procedure, is basically, you're, even if I was transferring it, I would have to have some authority, I think even, it says in here, it's sell, assign, and transfer, so it gives me the authority to do that.
Any other discussion on that resolution? Any other discussion on that resolution?
Is this really about the only occasion where you see this being warranted?
This is the only occasion I've had in 35 and a half years, but it has to deal with somebody who donated stock back in 1981.
And when you transfer stock, you have to do a medallion stamp. Was there kind of a? I do those at the bank, not that I would do it for the school district, but you just have to have something on paper showing that you're the authorized party for the school, and that's why this is probably here. Because you can't do it, so.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Matt Limkey.
Yes.
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
Natalie Knutson.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Melanie Cole, yes. Stephen Vegas, yes?
Yes. Resolution passes. Thank you. Item number four is a resolution on the retirement of Lorraine Hicks, whereas Lorraine Hicks began her employment with the Fergus Falls Public Schools in September 2012, and whereas Lorraine has been a valued employee with the Fergus Falls Public Schools for the past seven years, and whereas Lorraine has done an excellent job in our cafeteria, and now therefore be it resolved by the Fergus Falls School Board to thank Lorraine Hicks for her seven years of dedicated service to the Fergus Falls Public Schools. Will somebody offer that resolution and move for its adoption?
I offer that resolution and move for its adoption.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
Natalie Knutson. Missy Hermes, yes. Melanie Cole, yes. Stephen Vegas, yes.
Yes.
And Matt Limkey.
Yes. The resolution passes. Thank you. Item number five is the tentative FY 2019 seniority list for the Independent School District 544, Fergus Falls Public Schools. There is no action on this, it's just the first reading, so I think this is more for everybody else to look at, like the two, but just so that we look it over and make sure that it's correct.
And actually, I have sent it out to the certified staff. They have 10 days to notify we have any changes. Once we have that time passed, as we actually officially approve the final one.
Yep.
Item number six is the 2019-2020 Fergus Falls School District Calendar. I'm going to have Superintendent Ness speak on it first before we.
Sure, yep. The process that we use is we work through our meet and confer. One of the key items every year is bringing that typically. What I do is I bring a sample calendar that sort of rolls over from last year to the next year. And, you know, this year, we're graduating the Friday before Memorial Day with, with a Christmas Day and New Year's Day on a Wednesday. We just really couldn't make that work. So, I'm getting ahead of myself. I'll start with the fall in service, four days, very typical, Monday through Thursday, the last week of August. We're using our float day again, where staff can use to prepare, document that. That went very, very well. Parent teachers are in October, have not changed the format. We, we did, we have two full weeks, that's probably the highlight of the calendar. There's two full weeks at Christmas, and it's, when, again, with Christmas and New Year's being on a Wednesday, it's very difficult one way or the other to, and that's, so that's going to be a big hit. And it just goes through, again, the, this is a calendar much like this year, where the makeup days are at the end of the year. There really isn't, it's a pretty tight calendar in the sense that there's not days here and there that we can make up because we used all of our extra days in that Christmas vacation. The battle, I'm not going to call them garbage days. I'm going to call them, they're, they're valued days, and, and our teachers need to teach to the end. And we encourage them that you have to go right up to the end, and they, they have strategies to do that. So, many, many, many schools go to June 12th or even the 19th. So, it's for us to go a week after Labor Day is not unusual. It's a mindset that we have to get, and I think we'll, we'll be just fine with making up those days. So, that is the calendar, and we, we are, we are, this is a recommendation from the meet and confer to the board to approve this tonight.
Do we have a motion to approve the 2019-2020 Fergus Falls School District Calendar as presented?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Jerry, who was on the, was on the legislative committee a couple years ago? There was an e-learning bill introduced two, two years ago, I think, that that, that never did pass to make up snow days via e-learning.
I think we can do that if we choose to. We, we have.
We have set a framework to do that.
Right, we would have to, a lot of the schools that do that have one-on-one devices, so the students can bring home, and they have those. We're, we're not quite set up that way.
Okay, and we can talk about that in our work session, too.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
That's a question that, that had come up in my conversation, too, with one of the teachers, and she just said, with the last snow day, she still reached out to all her students and had them working on something.
Sure.
So, and mostly specifically with seniors, just because they graduate and then coming back to finish out.
Close to the end of the semester and all those things. Sure, yep, that's.
More relevant to her.
We just have to take into account that not all of our students have computers or Wi-Fi at home.
Sure.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Our next regular school board meeting will be Monday, January 28th, 2019, at 5:15, right here at the Otter Community Room at Kennedy Secondary School. Following that, our meeting, we will go into a work session to talk about talent development committees, Minnesota School Board Association conference details, the heritage building, work experience, superintendent hiring process, snow makeup days, hockey booster request.
We might not be getting home late.
So, we have a full work session. So, with that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. got that one? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? We are adjourned.